Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the second tentative budget hearing, and our esteemed colleague Commissioner Kennard has offered, or volun-told by me, volun- asked, to lead both invocation and the pledge. So if you're willing and able to stand, please join us.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer tonight so thankful for the many blessings in our lives. Lord, we pray that you would be with us here tonight and guide us in our thoughts, in our discussion, ultimately any decisions that are made. Lord, we pray that you would keep the discussion respectful of each other's thoughts and opinions, and know that you're truly, we are truly loved, each and every one of us, by you. Lord, we pray that you would be with our first responders here at home, and our men and women in uniform around the world. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, ma'am.
And roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. This is a special meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this seventh day of September 2023. In attendance are First Vice Chair Holly Davis, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Diana Finnegan, County Administrator Steve Howard, and Management and Budget Director Erin Doorn.
Great. So first thing on our agenda is to discuss the purpose for the public hearing. They're primarily for explaining the budget proposed tax levy and any proposed amendments, as well as affording the general public the opportunity to participate in the budget process. And Erin Doorn, take it away.
So we'll be starting with B2, which is the proposed tentative millage rate for fiscal year 2023-24. And we have a presentation. The first slide is information that we are required to announce per Florida statute 200.065. The name of the taxing authority, Citrus County. The aggregate rolled back rate is 7.5349. The percentage of increase over the aggregate rolled back rate is 17.79, and the tentative aggregate millage rate of 8.8755. The next slide has the calculation of the aggregate millage rate. So you can see for fiscal year 2023-24, the county, the taxable value is $13,609,518,600. The tentative millage rate is 6.9951 for taxes levied of $95,199,944. Transportation, the same, $13,609,518,600, with a tentative millage rate of .9860. For taxes levied totaling $13,418,985. The Health Department, again taxable value, is $13,609,518,600, with a tentative millage rate of .0564. Taxes levied, $767,577. Then there is Library, taxable value again is $13,609,518,600, with a tentative millage rate of .3147. Taxes levied, $4,282,916. And then the last one is Fire. Their taxable value is slightly different because the cities are not included. So it is $12,322,20664, with a tentative millage rate of .5780. For taxes levied of $7,122,232. That gives us a tentative millage rate of 8.9302, with taxes levied of $120,791,654. At the bottom of that slide, it talks about the calculation of the aggregate millage rate. This is a formula that the Department of Revenue provides us. So you'll see the total taxes levied divided by the taxable value is the aggregate millage rate, which is different than the tentative millage rate. The next slide is the budget discussion. So there are a few items that staff is asking for some clarification and direction on. Those include the sheriff, the pay-in class study, and then any other items or projects that the commission would like added to the budget or removed from the budget. The next slide is for the sheriff who is here tonight. These are updated figures that he has provided to us, and he would like to present to the board.
Now?
I believe so.
Okay. He's coming.
We'll just start with me and the sheriff and his administration staff, and our admin staff has had, I think, some great, good discussions and collaboration over the last couple of weeks. Also worked a lot in the EOC Center as well. So I want to thank the sheriff for his willingness to meet and his staff so we continue to strengthen the relationship, which we said that we would. So, thank you.
Hello, Sheriff. Welcome.
It's good to have a little bit of rain, but not inundating rain, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we did have a couple of very productive meetings with Mr. Howard and staff, and we've got quite a bit of work done. What you see in this number that's represented on that slide is removing the 44 added positions that we submitted through the COPS grant through the Department of Justice, and it's addressing the FRS increases, the health increases, and the workers' comp increases, plus some operating expenses. And when you just add those up, that increased our budget by 3.94%, along with some of our other things that are going on in the agency. Allows us to get the job done with the added 10 positions that we got through the budget amendment, as well as retain the staff that we've been working so hard to keep in the sheriff's office, to keep as many men and women out there on patrol, doing the things that they do, not only in times of tranquility and peace, but also during times of an actual disaster like what we just had impact us last week over on the west side of the county, and very dramatically brought in unprecedented storm surge that, at least in recorded history, according to the record books, we've not heretofore seen. So if you have any questions about this, I'll try and answer them. If I can, I'll ask either Tracy or Colonel Vett to address them for you.
So the 44 went away, and the net change is 3.9% from the last presented budget, not 3.9% from your year?
No, no. Actually, so what our total budget is, it's 3.94% is the things that were handed down to us through either state legislative changes for FRS contributions, workers' comp changes, or healthcare cost changes. And then when we talked to staff, we talked about not only that 3.94%, but there's money that we turn back every year, which in our budget book, every year we note that what we anticipate for the fees that we collect will return back to the VOCC. And the real net effect is that our increase is about 5% when you take out those things that are there. It's 5.1% to be precise, whenever you take out all of those adjusted things that are out there. So this here amount that we put on this slide is a direct reflection of removing the 44, but allowing us to continue on with the tenant we just hired, along with all of the other programs that we have to keep in place in order to meet the adjustments for FRS contributions and healthcare costs and our workers' comp fees.
If memory serves, we had already said to add another 12 besides the 10? Yes?
No, when we submitted our budget last year for '22-23, we added 22 positions into that, and we didn't get the funding for that. So we came back with the budget amendment in March for 22 positions. We-
We got 10, and then we were going to do another 12.
Well, I don't have that in this budget right now, no. Because we're going to wait and see what happens with the cops-
That's what I'm asking. Is that coming out, the additional 12 being put on hold?
Yes. We did not incorporate that into this because we don't know what's going to happen with the COPS grant until after the first of October, or much later into the fall.
Okay. You have something?
Yeah, we had agreed to the 10, and nothing's happening with the 12 until after we find out what happens there. Sheriff, how much is being returned to the county? And do you know what percentage of your budget that reflects?
It's about 1%, Commissioner Kennard. But one second, I'll give you the precise number that we estimated. We anticipate $378,000 to be returned. Last year, we anticipated a similar number, I believe, from what Director Sefrin told me. It's almost $100,000. Now, that's in the fees and things that we collect over the course of the year. We turn that money back in routinely every year.
And so what you're saying is that your budget from last year, plus the 3%, and this 3.9, that's out of 3.9 in FRS, healthcare, and workers' comp, that you have no control over, minus what's being returned, is that's where you're saying that you're only asking for roughly a 5% increase?
As we explained to you when you came to our office back, I think in late July, early part of August, we walked you through this budget note sheet right here that reflected 3.94% of things beyond our control, and then not to include the added 22 or the 44 from the grant that was in there, which was about $3.5 million. And then the things that were beyond our control that we took out, brought it down to about $2 million. Is that right, Tracy? And then we returned the 338, 447 as projected. So our net increase, once you took the things that were beyond our control out, was $1.788 million.
Okay. All right. I'm showing, I mean, just roughly 5.9, 5.9% increase, so just shy of 6%. Okay. No, I'm good for it now.
Commissioner Finnegan?
I want my computer up in front of me, but it would not let me in, in the middle of talking to Erin today. So tech support has to help me. Erin, I wanted to ask you and forgive me at home, I'm getting over a cold, obviously. Is this adjusted budget? What difference is it from this? How much money are we talking that's different from the sheriff's budget that was in the projected budget?
So in that budget that you have right there, we have the 10 positions that the board had approved, the 3% the board had approved, and then in reserve, we had, I believe it was approximately 6.3 for the 44 COPS grants positions. So it would be approximately an additional $2.4, $2.5 million that is not currently accounted for in the budget to get to this number. And that's when we were talking about the possible places that funding could come from.
So if we already added in the 3% in this budget, and the 10 deputies, what's the extra $2 million if we're weighting on the 12?
That is just based on the figures that we were provided. So there's not-
I'm not, Commissioner Finnegan, I'm not following exactly what your question is. So when we went through these numbers, we presented the amount that we needed to add the 10 new positions, to do the full budget for the folks that we already had on the payroll, to take care of the FRS adjustments, the workers' comp adjustments, the healthcare costs that went up, and also to make sure we recognize that we're going to return back nearly $400,000, give or take, and then took care of some operating capital expenses. And those numbers that we put together came up to $1.788 million.
$1.788, Erin's saying it came up to an additional 2.4.
But that's a difference in how the calculation was done.
Commissioner Kennard, did you understand what I was asking, and were you about to clear it up?
Well, I don't know that I can clear it up, but I'm going to try. Just a little bit of history, and this was brought to my attention when I sat down, met with the sheriff and his folks. In the past, when we would give budget direction, we would, we have told them that we would look at their previous year's budget plus inflation plus 3%. What we did this year is last year's budget plus 3%, left out the inflation part of it, which is roughly about 3%.
Okay.
And so what was pointed out to me by the sheriff is that the additional amount, that inflationary amount, if you will, that they have no control over, the FRS, health insurance, and workers' comp, makes up this additional amount that we did not account for in their budget, in our budget guidance earlier in the year.
The 1.788.
I believe that's-
And then you have to add in, part of the 2.4 is the recurring cost that we have to add in for the 10 that we just got added in our current fiscal year. They're there. We have to put that cost back in, the majority of its salary, and then your recurring cost. So that's part of the difference.
And that's 1.3 million, just for the recurring cost for the 10.
But according to Erin, it was already in our projected budget in July.
Right. So we have, the 10 are in this budget, and then we only did 3%. And I think what they're saying is, this is their budget that they submitted, we came up with 3%. So they're asking for more than 3% for what they need.
Under 6, but that didn't count. The 3% that was calculated prior to did not include the 10. That number was not put in there.
Right. It was 3% on their adopted budget for this year.
Which doesn't count, the budget amendment that we were just given.
Understood. So 3% is actually higher than what the 3% was because you, we added those deputies.
Correct.
Of course. Thank you.
Commissioner Kennard, is the 3% that's not inflationary, is that just our average growth rate? Since you're the senior member here, maybe you have more historical knowledge.
The senior member. We're back to that term again.
Oh, wise one. I know you like that.
Right, right.
I almost like an old soul better than senior member.
Some days older than others, but I know I'm preaching to the choir after this past week.
And what's the derivation, or what's the providence of the 3%, the first 3%?
That is, that has been the number that has been used the last few years to account for increasing costs, things like that.
But that's inflation. Is it growth?
It was, that would be growth, yes, because it was, inflation was assigned a number that it might be, and I don't recall off the top of my head where Randy pulled that number from, but it would be that 3% plus the inflationary number.
Right. So we have bigger growth and bigger inflation this year, which is a little tough.
Certainly looks like it. You know, I think one option, and I think it's something that maybe the sheriff's agreeable to, is that we've set aside the, what, 6.8 million in reserves-
Yes, 2.2.
-for the result of that COPS grant. You know, if they're saying, we absolutely have to have this additional money, we pull it from what's already calculated in the budget from that reserve. And if they end up getting the 42 positions or 44 positions, whatever it was they applied for, at that point, you've got this much money to deal with. We don't have the money to fund all 44 of them then. We can't do, we don't have the money to do this additional amount on top of holding that 6.8 in reserves in the event that they would be awarded 44 positions.
But back to Commissioner Finnegan's question that I don't think you ever got an answer to, and I was wondering the same thing. So is it a net increase in real dollars from the last budget that, because we spent, I know I spent a lot of time with y'all and wrapping my head around what is a pretty complex budget, and it's a big part of our budget, right? Wrapping my head around that, coming to a place where I could agree that you needed X, Y, and Z to do your job. So now it's X, Y, and Z plus something, is what I understand. So in that book, we had the original amount he asked for. There is a net difference additional?
In that, in our budget, that was the guidance that the board had provided. So it was not the entire budget-
So that was not what they asked for?
Right. When we did the budget presentation, we took the guidance of the board, and that's what was put into the budget. So if the guidance now is that we will take that 2.4, 2.5 out of the reserve we're holding for the 44 COPS grant, it also, at this point in time, wouldn't change the budget. We would just be moving it from the pot of reserves over to the sheriff's budget.
Okay. So what you've presented so far, I'm still, I'm sorry, I'm struggling to understand exactly what you're asking for.
It's been a long two weeks.
Yes. You look like you went through a hurricane, Mike. So that number that we came to some sort of agreement on in the last budget round, it sounds like, from what you're describing, that it would almost be a decrease in that budget, but you're asking for more?
No, it's a decrease from what we originally-
Less. Okay, well, that's a lot easier to swallow. Okay, thank you.
The original number was 49 million, now 39 million.
Okay. That's why I was looking at that going, I thought it was a lot higher than that. But, understand, I had a staff briefing as well, and I'm trying to coordinate what you're saying here and what the staff briefing was.
As all of you will recall from our prior discussions, when we put this budget together and submitted it on June 1st, we didn't know what the VOCC was going to do with our budget amendment request for the 22 positions.
Right.
We did know that you had approved unanimously the 44 positions through the COPS grant, but as we've talked about and shared with you, we have no indication whatsoever how many percentage-wise of that COPS grant might get funded. We're a much smaller community than those that generally attract a lot of opportunity for harvesting that grant money. Last year, there were only four that got COPS grant money that were really of substantial numbers of, like, near 45 to 50 positions. Some agencies applied, and they got one. Less than 25% of the applicants, on average, for the last decade, have been approved through the COPS grant process. And so if you don't get it the first year, you know, you might go back and double down the next year and see if you can apply again to get it the next year. And that's the first time in probably over a decade where we've tried to compete for a grant of any sort whatsoever through DOJ and getting this community-oriented policing services grant money to be brought back here to our community to support our community.
Well, I do appreciate, and I believe you wanted to say something, but I just wanted to say I appreciate what you and your team did with the hurricane. I was not here. So I was stressing from afar.
Again, we were very, very fortunate with this hurricane. I have been in every county north of here, all the way up to Lafayette County, and seeing the destruction up there. The further north you go, the storm surge is devastating, but those coastal areas are not anything close to as densely packed as we are in our coastal area in Citrus County. And it's devastating, absolutely, but the more impact from the hurricane that occurred was concentrated inland, and Taylor County is still, a lot of its citizens are still out of power. Madison and Swanee and Franklin County, a lot of those counties are going to be working on power issues for a long time to come.
Okay. Excellent. And you did have something, Commissioner Finnegan?
I did. I want to switch from talking about percentages. I don't think the people with their tax dollars talk about it, percentages. They talk about dollars. So when we say 3% was added, do you have a number from either side? What was, what is the 3% in dollars?
I have the 3% and the 10 officers added together. I can tell you the 3% alone was slightly over $1 million. It was like $1,500,000. But together, they're $1,871,485 currently in the budget.
Well, just to Commissioner Kennard's point, so normally we take the budget, and then we, for growth, 3%, like inflationary, and then growth, the 3%, that's what you said. So if we're taking care of the growth, if we're adding the 10 deputies, and then we're putting all this money, hopefully for a lot more deputies, to match this grant, doesn't that take care of the growth? So then shouldn't we have the sheriff's budget plus the 10 deputies, plus the 3% on top of the 10, not before the 10, and then holding to add more deputies when you get that money? So it seems like if the sheriff is saying he needed the additional 1.788 to cover all those costs, then we could pull that extra million out because we're taking care of all of the growth.
That is on top of, that 2.4, 2.5 is on top of this number, looking at the figures they had sent over. So it looks like from last year's budget, which they had, and this year's budget, the difference was $3,510,234.
Sheriff, to get you what you need, I want to get you a lot more probably than what you're asking because I understand. But obviously, when we have our budget and they're asking our taxpayers for $20 million more, something has to give somewhere. So I'm trying to balance, give you everything that we could get you through at least extra this year, and then move on the other years. So your budget with the 10 deputies and your 3%, or, excuse me, not the 3%, your budget, the 10 deputies, and then you said you need an extra 1.788 to cover those costs that you can otherwise cover, FRS, insurance, all of those things. If we give you your budget, 10 deputies, and then 1.788, can we not use the rest of the money once you get that COPS grant and take care of the growth from there?
It doesn't work, though. We can't, we can't work it that way.
Can you tell me why?
I, so, Mr. Finnegan, when we took last year's budget, and if we added only 3% on top of that, that doesn't even cover the cost of the FRS increase.
No, I don't want to give you just the 3%. You said to cover all those extra costs for next year, you need 1.788 million. I'm saying, give that to you.
Okay.
But the, Erin, because of what Commissioner Kennard said we just do every year, they, at first in this budget, said, we're going to give you 3% on your budget, and then they added the 10 deputies backwards because obviously you need the percentage, and that's for growth. But I'm saying, we're going to take care of that growth. So we give you your budget, we give you 10 deputies, then we add everything that you said, I need another 1.788 for all these expenses, FRS, whatever. But you're saying it doesn't work, but that's what you said you needed. So if we give you all of that, the extra 3% for growth, we're going to take care of in this reserves for the $6.3 million.
You talk about the 3% for growth. It's not 3% for positions or salary. That's 3% for new growth to the tax basis, correct? She's relating it to 3%.
The 3% historically would be for, would be for growth. It'd be for increased costs of operation, increase, you know- The three percent historically would be for, would be for growth. It'd be for increased costs of operation, increase, um, so, you know, deputy salaries, um, sworn in. Uh, non-sworn personnel salary increases, things like that.
Well, if I, if I refer you back to last year's letter that we got. It reads, "The F Y twenty-three budget is tentatively based on the rollback rate plus five percent for inflation. We conservatively anticipate new growth at three percent based on affordability of the homestead exemption. The total budget increase over prior year should not exceed six point five percent." Which this one that was dated March twenty-ninth that came out, didn't recognize the inflationary effects that impacted all of us. And that still continues to impact us. So when we laid out and put this presentation together, we acknowledged the F R S, the healthcare costs of workers' comp. And that came up to more than what the three percent suggested increase would be, uh, at a million fifty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars. And then there's, you know, there's other modest things that are in there. That's how we derive this number that is now projected at thirty-nine, eight, forty-three.
I believe you. I just don't think the math is adding up between the two.
Well, I, Commissioner Finnegan, I, I, we had a pretty good conversation with Mr. Howard yesterday. And I thought we had a pretty good, uh, ar- arithmetic formula there that we put together.
When I did the math, it was two point five is what we're talking, I mean.
Okay, so two point five instead of one, one point seven eight eight. So back to my point, last year's budget, add the ten deputies, then add two point five million dollars and then hold the rest in the reserves. And that should take care of the growth. Is that accurate, Sheriff? Is that, Elaine is saying yes, that works?
That's what we had.
That, that, that formula works.
But that is, that shouldn't be two point five more over this budget. Because if it is, going back to my point, you already put three percent in that, shouldn't that back us? You said about a million dollars out because we added the three percent?
We already backed that million dollars out. So based on the numbers they sent last year to this year and what they're asking for, um, it was, that, hold on. It was three million, five hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. However, we had already put in three percent, which was one million, fifty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. So that's leaving us about two million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That still needs to be moved into their budget if we're using these numbers. And that's where we're saying, if you want, we'll take it from what's being held in reserve for the forty-four. And we'll move it over to the sheriff's budget. So at ten-one, that funding will be available. All of the funding that he's requesting right now.
That seems like the only option. We can't add anymore to this projected budget. We need to start cutting things from this, not adding. So Sheriff, I mean, you would understand that, right? You would get the money, but it would have to come from some of that reserve bucket.
But, and, and again, Commissioner Finnegan, you know, we, we can hope all day long, but the past practices, when the, the cops grants have been awarded. It's a very small fraction of the overall percentage that actually gets awarded every year. And they, you know, we, we said, let's shoot for the stars and we'll accept, you know, whatever we can get because it's our money we sent to Washington, D.C. And if we don't harvest it and bring it back here to do the good that our taxpayers expect us to do, we're not doing our due diligence to represent our people and, and, and take care of them properly. I, I would rather us try to harvest that money than let Chicago, New York, Los Angeles, Seattle, Portland, all of those big communities out there. Uh, harvest that money that was our money that we could have used to help us here in Citrus County, especially, uh, with the increase in demands for service and the call volume that we're seeing. And the population increases that every community in Florida is enduring.
So Sheriff, I just want to put in my two cents, that since you're getting all these deputies and you're getting this money out of reserves, I want to see more deputies on the water.
Guaranteed, that's going to happen.
I'm getting thumbs up from behind you, Sheriff, so I'm going to hold you to that.
That, that's, that's a hundred, that's a hundred percent. Of those, just those ten alone, uh, we're going to take two of them, which is twenty percent of the ten that were added. Uh, we're going to put the, them into the marine unit.
Thank you.
And there'll be more with, if we do get a, a tranche of money for the cops grant, there'll be more going towards the marine unit.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Sheriff, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, that, uh, understanding that this additional request is coming out of the reserves that we're holding back. For those potential forty-four and that when that cops grant award comes through and we're limited on funds, that we're not going to be at odds with each other.
Absolutely not.
And the sheriff's not going to be out there saying, we got awarded forty-four, but the B O C C will only fund us thirty-one.
Absolutely not. And as we explained to you as well, Commissioner Carr, it's a great point to make. We can't start drawing that money until we hire them. And as we've emphasized a couple of times now, the data is clearly indicating that the academies are doing a poor job of pushing out more deputies into the career field, not because the academy is doing a poor job, but we can't get the, the students to go sit in a seat and take the courses. And, and so they're, they're caught between a rock and a hard place to try and recruit folks to come into the career field. Florida's doing pretty good, but here in Florida, we're not making more law enforcement academy graduates today than what we were twenty years ago. Out of every academy across the, the state. So they, they can't, the academies can't do it themselves. It's folks like us that are elected officials talking about the career field and encouraging young men and women and some older men and women as well. To join the career, uh, join the, the law enforcement firefighting or EMS, uh, career fields to be public servants and serve others. And I'll give you a great example. There's, uh, an academy up in Madison County that I visited a couple of weeks ago. And there's a guy that's sixty-one years old, going through the academy for his second career. He wants something to do and.
I'm sorry, Sheriff, did you just try to recruit our commissioner for your, for your team?
He's an old soul, but I don't think he's that old.
I just want to make sure we're going to be on the same team.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and so if we're only able, and this is a three-year window. If we're only able to harvest about ten or fifteen or twenty, that's ten or fifteen or twenty that we're better off using that cops grant money for. Uh, I want the bird in hand. I want to keep the talent that we've got and, and invest in them and keep them on the, on the road, serving our citizens. Absolutely.
Wise choice. All done?
I'm good.
Okay. Staff, anything? Nope. All good?
Thank you. I know it's a lot of questions, but I just want to make sure they're on the same page.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Um, Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
I would just want to ask, um, Erin, if she's got the guidance that she needs.
I'm hearing a consensus to approve the additional two point four and to take it out of the reserves for the forty-four cops grant positions that we currently have held in reserves. And move it to their budget.
Yes. Commissioner Finnegan?
Yes.
You got it.
Okay, also on the budget discussion slide, we have, um, the paying class study as well as other. So, uh, for commissioners, are there any projects or anything else that you would like to see added to the budget or removed from the budget? For us to bring back to you at the September twenty-sixth hearing?
Are we skipping over paying class then?
No, I just want to make sure I have this one.
Okay.
I have something to say about that.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Because we had dedicated the half a mil to the paying class, but it's my understanding we don't need all of that money to fund the paying class. I think that we need the accurate number and then that will strike, uh, we, we had talked about one point five million dollars out of the budget.
Commissioner, uh, Kennard?
Yeah, I think the, um, the, uh, half a mil was put in there as a placeholder, if you will, that that was estimated what it would cost. And then, uh, as we found out, uh, that it was requiring less than that. But then there was an additional payment towards, um, was it, was it health insurance?
Health insurance.
Maybe it was a million, five, million, seven, something like that. And so with the, the funds required, uh, to cover the paying class, uh, increases, plus the one point seven, where does that? How much of that point five mil placeholder does that take up?
Let Erin answer that.
That's where we would need to get the exact figure, um, now that we have the number from Evergreen. Um, we got some more feedback from them. So, um, as I was talking to other commissioners, we can bring back the exact total dollar amount that is remaining as well as the exact millage. And so at that time, the board could choose to reduce the millage by that amount, or they could choose to use that funding if they so chose. So we can bring that back to you on the twenty-sixth.
My position is going to be that we reduce the millage rate at that point. I will not support using, using that money just because we had a half mil placeholder, that that's all of a sudden found money. Any way you look at it, the millage rate's going up and we've got to, we've still got to look for ways to, uh, to cut that, that final number. So I would be looking to, um, uh, return that number in the terms of reducing the millage rate on the twenty-sixth.
I would completely agree that anything that's a placeholder, I would hope that would go without saying, but I understand it doesn't. Anything that is a placeholder, that's the whole point of having three meetings is to get the numbers drilled down and down and down to make sure we're not cutting something that's dumb to cut. You know, but, um, also making sure that we trim it as much as possible. And just as a reminder, all of us are taxpayers too, so we don't want it any more than y'all do. Commissioner Finnegan, anything else?
Depends on what comes after this. Are we going to start talking about ways to trim? What comes after?
We can talk. Um, I would suggest that we talk about where our heads are. If, if there's things that we want to talk about now, but in the absence of two of our colleagues, which by the way are fine, um, they have very good reasons for not being here. I think that out of respect for the board and also to make sure that our budget staff has every opportunity to drill down and make this as smart and lean, smartly lean. Budget as possible, that we, you know, we give guidance to some degree, but mostly we're going to wait till the twenty-sixth. And that's going to be a monster meeting where we really have to do a lot of prep for that.
I can kind of tell you where I am, uh, agreeing with Commissioner Kennard that we can't pass the millage this high. I, I'm not going to vote for that. Um, I would like to see ways on the twenty-sixth that Erin can trim this down or if we have other ideas. But the, um, the, the only, the only other huge pot of money and where, where to find to trim it down, which the sheriff took some of that money out. But our, um, our standards say that Citrus County for our reserves collects between eight percent and seventeen percent in reserves. Obviously, we don't want to do the low end, especially with storms and things coming. We need to build that up so that we can operate in case of a storm. Um, last year we collected sixteen percent. This year we're, we're on track with the seventeen percent. But because there's new growth, if I remember correctly, last year was about sixteen point three million, where this year it's twenty-seven million. And we need that extra money for some of it, for the extra, I think that leaves the sheriff a couple million, um, because I think the rest of the six point three was in, um, impact fee reserves. Um, and we, according to Erin, we wouldn't need the one point five for the paying class in that. But I say go back to the sixteen point three that we collected last year. Add the extra two point, whatever it's left for the sheriff's reserve and then chop the rest down from twenty-seven million. That may save us around seven million dollars and that's going to make somewhat of an impact, but that off the top of my head is where I am because I'm not, I'm not seeing other ways to cut. I'm going to still keep drilling down and looking.
Do you have something to say or, or can I jump in?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, um, very hesitant about, I'm, I'm willing to listen, but I'm very hesitant about, uh, reducing, uh, our reserves. Particularly if it's, you know, if the purpose of doing so is for a, a, um, a millage rate reduction one year or, um, using that money for any recurring, uh, expenses when it's one-time money. Um, so I'm willing to listen to it to get us to that, that previous percentage of sixteen point three percent, I think you said that it was.
It was, um, the percentage was sixteen percent. This year it looks around seventeen percent. It's just because we have much more taxable value.
Right, right.
It was sixteen point three million versus twenty-seven million. So I'm not saying take anything out of reserves or away from it. It's just in this budget. It's a lot of millions dollars more.
Right.
And we may not need to do that next year, but, um, I'm just throwing something out to see what sticks.
Yeah.
To save everybody some money this year. This year, our economy is terrible. This year, people have faced storms. This year, the cost of gas and medicine and food, everything has went up. So how do we run government effectively to benefit all these people, but at the same time not, um, hit their wallets so hard?
Right, right. No, I understand. I'm, I'm open to the discussion for sure.
I'm, I'm open to if we didn't do that, then where else are we cutting? I mean, if we find better places, um, I'm willing to listen.
Well, I think the, the, the only, the only, um, ob- objective that we have for tonight, the goal for tonight is, um, agreeing to an advertised millage rate and getting that advertisement out there. So between now and the twenty-sixth, there's a lot of ideas that, that can be floated, uh, to, and brought forward on the twenty-sixth. Hopefully when all five of us are here and walk through and reduce this, reduce this millage rate, but I'm open to the discussion for sure.
And I understand that the twenty-sixth will be the big day, but, um, today is the advertised millage rate. And frankly, I hate what looks like the advertised millage rate. I, I don't like it at all and I won't vote for it. Um, I guess if we decide that that's the military we want to put out for now, but I mean, I'll make it very clear that there's no way we could pass.
Yeah.
Where it stands now. We just, I, I won't do it.
Nope, understood.
So as the millage rate stands right now, I am willing to vote for it right now, but not on the twenty-sixth. So I'm willing to take the heat for the advertisement, but I one hundred percent agree with everything you said about what the status is of the economy right now and not needing to hit people. And but we just need that, um, you know, it's, we need that intervening time to make sure that we are cutting the right things and getting that drilled down to what we need. I just think that that's.
We don't want to shave anything. We don't want to advertise it any lower at this point?
Certainly not in the absence of two of our colleagues. That's my position. But I hear you and I agree with you, so take the win. I completely agree with you on the overarching issue. One hundred percent. This is just a timing issue.
I mean, regrettably, two colleagues aren't here, but we are. We showed up to work.
I said especially. It wasn't the primary driver. The primary driver is to, in my position, is to allow the budget staff to do their job. And with, meeting with us and so forth, to really figure out where we can trim it. And as far as reserves go, I totally concur with Commissioner Kennard. As long as it's smart business, I am totally, you know, I think that's a great place to look. But it's, and I've thought about that myself, but we need to make sure that we are practicing prudent fiscal management because obviously the amount of reserves we have goes a lot to what our interest rate is when we need to bond money and so forth, so. Anywho. Is budget season over yet? Anything further, Commissioner Kennard?
No.
Anything further?
So as long as there's nothing else, um, under other that you would all like us to look at, what I'm hearing, uh, to bring back for the twenty-sixth um, is the difference for the paying class study, that dollar amount along with that millage for you all to review. Um, looking at, um, obviously keeping the sheriff's remainder of their funds for the forty-four positions in reserve. Um, removing that paying class and what it would look like if we brought the reserves back down to sixteen point three million? And what that percentage would be and what that millage would be associated. Is that what you were looking for?
I thought it was sixteen point three percent that you were saying that we ought to look at.
Which oddly enough, it was, it was about that, but that's about the millions of dollars of last year, which was higher than any other year prior, if you look. which was higher than any other year prior, if you look at the last ten years.
If you're looking for a consensus, my, um, feeling would be is to look to y'all for guidance on, you know, it's eight to seventeen percent, but you get down into the eight range and things get super expensive for us. So we need to look at what that, the best return level is. And that's the percentage that I would be willing to, um, consider.
Yeah, I was gonna say too, you always gotta be consideration of bond rating. Your bond ratings are affected by your fund balance too.
That's what I was saying, yes.
I'm always concerned about that and we've had discussions, but I think it's good to look at it. I think we're, we're gonna take an ice pick and then a scalpel. You know, to the budget between now and the twenty-sixth, that's something that we will do. We just need some, a little bit of guidance, kinda, you know, this is kinda, this is a process, it's a big process to get through to get to the finish line. But I always caution that those reserves are really critically important. A lot of people forget about the bond rating and they actually, that's what they put in the write-up. When they reaffirm your bond rating, they'll put reserves, how much reserves do you have? Otherwise, that can be costly as well.
That's why I've mentioned it several times, I did not forget it. Commissioner Kennard?
Well, I think all that Commissioner Finnegan is talking about is, um, reducing, uh, rather than having seventeen percent in reserves, going, holding at the sixteen point three percent that we had last year, is that correct?
Not exactly.
Oh, so you're talking about going lower than that?
I was talking about dollar amounts, so, and that's what I wanted to ask about the bond rating. You say they look at our reserves, but is it really the fund balance or they look at an actual percentage that we took for that year? Because I know when Citrus County was bonding the heck out of everything, I think we were saving at like twelve percent back then. So I'm looking at a dollar amount, if we need sixteen point three million that looked good for us last year, all right, save it again this year, but I don't care about the percentage, I care about the dollar amount. So we went from a percentage higher, but it went from sixteen point three million to twenty-seven million dollars.
No, and, I'm sorry, I mean, they're.
No, that's okay.
You, you, you make a, you make a great point, um, but I think this is, this is why we don't, um, make that cut tonight is let's find out, um, let's find out, uh, what it is that these bonding agencies look at. Do they look at what is your percentage in reserves? Or do they look at what is the dollar amount? My guess is they look at the percentage in reserves. Um, and if it's a percentage, I would not want to reduce our percentage below what we had last year. Um, because if we get, you know, let's say, let's say the break even point is at sixteen percent or fifteen percent. And if we, we get down below that number, now we are going to affect the interest rate that we pay on bonds. Uh, so I, I would be, I would be open to staying at the same percentage, uh, in reserves that we had last year, which would still be some savings over what's currently budgeted, uh, rather than a straight dollar figure. It's all what, what those agencies look at.
I feel like, are you offended? I'm sorry. I feel like Aaron would have that information. Certainly, I can't imagine that they would say, what percentage did you save this year? Certainly, they would look at what percentage of your overall budget do you have in the bank?
Yeah, they'll, they'll look at a variety of things, but you know, another thing, just, I always look at, and I, when I first took this job here, I asked Aaron, you know, percentages and numbers, that, that gets a little confusing sometimes, but how many days can I operate this county with the money you have in the bank? That's what I need to know. You know, and I think when I got here, it was maybe twenty-eight days worth of activity, which is not a lot of, I mean, when you're really thinking, that's the way I have to look at it when I'm trying to function with this government. How much money do I have to actually operate this government? Uh, with general fund and then the enterprise, so that's where it gets a little challenging. We can bring that to you, but I'm sure Aaron's got more. They do look at a variety of things, I know, and bonding, a variety of things, you know, your economic development. Do you have a one-tier economy? There, there's a lot, there are a lot of factors.
But certainly, we could save, let's say we had zero dollars in the bank. But we said, oh, we're gonna save reserves this year at thirty percent. Well, certainly, they're not gonna give a good bond rating just because we're saving a high percentage for that year. They're gonna look at what we've accumulated in, in our assets in the bank and like you said, what's coming in through economic development. So I can't imagine a sitting on a percent for the year is going to make a huge difference in our bond rating. But Aaron, I mean, if you knew differently.
So like Mr. Howard said, they will look at several things, they've even asked us questions like the parkways coming through, do you think that will bring individuals to your community? Um, they do look at what's in reserve and they do look at that as far as, um, continuing operations. And how many days of operations you have. Um, they will look at everything, they look at our capital improvement program. They look at the projects we're doing. Um, like Mr. Howard said, they look at our economic development, what's planned for the future. They'll even look at businesses in the area, so they do factor in a lot. Um, but looking at how many days of operations we have available, um, you know, is important. And then we found out this year, the CIP is also important, um, in one of our calls, so.
Well, I'll say what I said to the sheriff, two men that I respect greatly. I want you to have ninety days of reserve tomorrow. But at the same time, we have to find some balance for all the citizens because they, they're paying for it. And if, if the economy was so good right now, as it was maybe several years ago, this would be a lot easier of a conversation to have, but it's just, it's not a, an easy conversation.
And I concur, you, you look at anything and everything, you take an ice pick and a scalpel to it. And we're committed to doing that.
Thank you. I'm sure that you will, I have no doubt.
I would say probably to bring it into, um, personal, um, sort of relation thing is that this is a lot like applying for a mortgage and looking at your credit rating. And it's a big doggone mystery how the credit rating companies come up with our credit ratings. And they change that all the time. And so that's what we're up against and nobody likes to pay a lot of, uh, mortgage interest or car loan interest and that's what we're trying to do. Is to make sure that we protect the credit rating well enough to get good interest rates, especially when interest rates are really high. So, anywho, next?
So if we're done with that, um, the next item before we do public comment will be B three, which is, uh, the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. The recommended action is, um, A, the proposed tentative budget is four hundred eleven, eleven, I'm sorry, four hundred eleven million, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars, which is a five percent decrease from fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget of four hundred and thirty-three million, seven hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars. And B, presentation of budget modifications, amending the twenty-three, twenty-four budget incorporating adjustments proposed at the budget workshop, which is exhibit A from the July twenty-sixth workshop. Other budget modifications, exhibit B, and our cash carry forward projects, which is exhibit C. Those were attached in the backup. And then we can go to, uh, B four, which will be receive public comments regarding fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
All right, so open to the public? All right, if you would like to address the board on the subject of our budget, please line up. Address your comments to the chair, we have, you have three minutes on the clock and please watch your timer. Can you make sure Amber's on for one minute? And you remember the drill. And fill out a green card to give to the clerk and you could do that before or after you speak. Welcome.
Hi.
Oh, and state your name.
Good evening, uh, yeah, uh, I am Samantha Carter, commissioners, I live in Inverness, Florida. And I'm here tonight to speak for many. Uh, tonight is a tentative budget hearing and normally from what I gather, uh, it's quite a lacklustre, quite lackluster when it comes to excitement. Um, however, here we are. And, um, uh, we acknowledge, we acknowledge that this is not the time or place for us to come to have social debates. This is now the second time another group has ambushed a county board in an attempt to bully and intimidate them into making a quick decision. My friends and I decided that to be respectful, uh, we would, uh, not do the same. We have sent our concerns through multiple outlets and feel that dragging this budget hearing on tonight is not a responsible way to spend tax dollars. You should be focusing on how to wisely spend our money. The ALA line item removal isn't about budgeting. All this, um, move does is remove the library director's employment perk of having their membership paid by the county back to them to pay personally. Which will then, then, which still then exposes them to the same exact content that this group is fighting against. We then are in the same position of trusting our library director's judgment for what they utilize as resources in the library. The only thing, thing we accomplish by removing this item is hand, handing a political and cultural charged headline opportunity to the blog and media outlets of the group that initiated this controversy. And secondly, now our direct, our library director absorbs that cost personally. We have policies in place today to protect against the concerns of drag story hour as we do not allow random outside guest speakers. Our libraries only allow trained certified library staff for story hours because it's more than just reading the story. Any group may use the library community rooms for their gatherings. In fact, a Brave Books story hour took place in September at the Lakes Region Library. And there is no violence or opposition. So please don't remove a professional position's educational development perk and move that cost on to the employee. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Doug Nicholson, I live in Crystal River. Um, I'm just basically, um, lived my life as a kid in the library, having all the good times, the stories and people we met. And then I look at the ALA and, um, when I find, I find out that the president is a professed Marxist communist and lesbian. I am very opposed to our money, as little as it may be, to go into something that can open up a horrible Pandora's box down the road with our children. And that's, um, basically what I wanted to say, I just totally oppose to anything that would bring this type of situation into our community. So by, uh, spending this money, I, it's a form of encouragement to this, and this country is in big trouble as it is. I mean, when we have a professed Marxist head of the, uh, ALA, this is disgusting. And people better wo- wo- wake up because we're very, very, very close to a lot of bad things happening if things don't get straightened out.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, my name is John Labriola, I, I have a letter on file, I represent the Christian Family Coalition. So I would request the five minutes. And, uh, I'm here to address the, uh, same point. First of all, I wanna congratulate the county on their excellent handling of the storm, I believe. Uh, the, how the county handled it both before and after certainly prevented it from being a much greater disaster than it would have been in human terms. So, um, thank the county, all, all the, uh, county staff for that. But, um, here to also address an item, uh, that was addressed by the two previous speakers of the American Library Association. Um, I understand that the American Library Association line item was removed, has been removed, uh, from the budget by staff in light of the, uh, library advisory board's vote last month, as well as subsequent comments to the press by several commissioners. Uh, but I, I read yesterday that, uh, the, uh, chairwoman, um, chairwoman, um, Chleba, unfortunately is not here, I wish she were, uh, is entertaining the idea now of accepting a donation, which some are calling a bribe, from a, a group of far-left liberals in the county to, uh, use that money to remain, um, a member of the American Library Association. I think that would be a horrible, horrible, uh, move. Um, first of all, it, it had nothing to do with the cost. Uh, I attended the library advisory board meeting last month, over thirty people attended. And it was very clear from the discussion, I hope, um, most of you had the chance to see the, watch the video, uh, that had nothing to do with the cost, it had to do with the agenda that the American Library Association is pushing. I, I shared a number of articles last week, uh, which I believe were included in your, um, in your minutes or, uh, you know, have, uh, were provided to, to, to the clerk for your, uh, perusal. And they included, um, articles, radical statements that the current Lib-, uh, American Library Association president, a self-avowed Marxist lesbian has made, um, regarding her push specifically for LGBT, uh, explicit materials being, um, provided in, in children's sections. Uh, she's very much an advocate of drag queen story hour. Uh, she's been, she's attended socialist conferences where she, uh, socialist workers or socialist Party of America conferences, where she has stated that her goal is to use libraries as a tool to advance socialism as, in America. Um, I appreciate the comments that several commissioners have made, uh, which I read in, in the local newspaper. But I would strongly urge you to reject any idea of a, accepting some donation, uh, because it's not, clearly it's a small, um, item monetarily, so this was not about the money, and if you haven't seen the video yet, I would encourage you to, to watch it. Regarding any supposed benefits from the American Library Association, again, uh, the, uh, one of the, uh, library body advisory board members, Edith Ramblow, who is the president, sorry, sorry, who was the, uh, librarian for the, uh, the College of Central Florida, stated very clearly, um, you know, from her expertise, that, that the benefits supposedly, uh, having to do with, uh, uh, manuals for, um, uh, ma- manuals for employee manuals, uh, also, uh, information about available federal grants. All these things can be, can be obtained by the county through existing library, uh, regional library partnerships, specifically the Tampa, she mentioned the Tampa Bay, uh, library consortium, which, which we're a mem- paying, a paying member of already. So, uh, there's, um, as I said, a number of articles that I provided to you last week, uh, rather last month, on this topic. There's an entire page on the American Library Association website dedicated to promoting drag queen story hours and, and advising librarians on how to, uh, actually put on a lot, a, a drag queen story hour, uh, in their library. So regardless of, uh, to, of whether or to what extent it's occurring in Citrus County libraries, we should not be funding that agenda, period. And, uh, I'm sorry that the two other commissioners are not here today, but I, um, I believe you have a quorum and if possible, we would like to see this item be put to bed and not just, like, uh, allow it to remain festering out there for the remainder of this month of September, unless you want, you know, long, really long meetings between now and, and the end of your budget process. If, if you, if you all feel that, you know, this, taking this donation is inappropriate, you know, maybe, uh, that could be addressed today, so we don't have to keep coming back to you, um, on this topic. So, we, uh, again, thank you for your service and, uh, please do address this and see if we can put this to bed today, so we don't have to keep coming back to you on this. Thank you so much.
Hi, thank you. My name is Lee Spalas from Pine Ridge. And I'm here to address the, um, I'm just gonna encourage the county commissioners to continue to reject any donation from, uh, liberal groups that are trying to kinda usurp the will of people as regards to the ALA. It shouldn't be a situation where a small group of leftists can come in and dictate to us how to run the county. Okay, or who gets funded or what we use as far as funding or how we run our libraries or how we influence our children. Um, we shouldn't allow this money to be used to fund an ALA, ALA membership. It's clearly a Marxist, Marxist organization. They're, they clearly have an agenda to, um, pollute the minds of our children. Their, their aim is to distort, um, traditional values. Their aim is to destroy, um, the idea of two genders. And so I, I believe we're living in a Romans one time right now, I really do. Those of you who aren't familiar with the Bible, or maybe you don't read it, or maybe you read it on an occasional basis, I encourage you to read Romans one because it talks about the degradation of society and how we keep going down the slippery slopes and it keeps, it keeps getting worse and worse. So as, uh, I'm an older dad, I'm sixty-four years old, but I have a thirteen-year-old and a sixteen-year-old still at home. So this affects my kids.
The sheriff wants to recruit you. He's looking for, he's looking for seniors.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm fairly busy these days, but, um, but yeah, I, so, and truth be told, I mean, I'm, I'm president of the Villagers for Trump over in, um, over in the villages. And, uh, we're five thousand people strong, but it's interesting listening to those people over there as far as what concerns them as parents and grandparents, and this is a, this is number one. These, we should not allow these radical groups to come in and give money to kinda usurp what we decide as a county, what we're, we should be doing. So that's, I just encourage you to kinda stay strong on that. I don't know what's in your hearts and minds. I, you know, only God knows that, but we always say a. But we always say a prayer before we do these meetings, and we always pray to God, and we ask for his blessing, and we ask for his direction. And I'm here to, you know, I'm offended by the fact that they want to kind of impose their will or impose their evil into our school systems, into our libraries, and things like that. So I, you know, I'm here to hopefully offend any lesbians and gay people, okay? They need to be offended, because they need to understand what their agenda is wrong. It's anti-God, it's anti-children, it's anti-parent, and it's anti-family. And this woman, her name is Emily Drabinski, she's the ALA president. She's self-proclaimed Marxist lesbian. That's who she is. So the people that are trying to come in with this money are just simply trying to usurp the will of the people, and that should never be. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Hope, please, no applause. Yes.
Before we go through one speaker after another coming up to talk about something that quite honestly is not on the agenda, is that something that you want to address?
It is nominally on the agenda because it is a budget item. However, it has already been stricken from the budget, and...
Yeah, it's not in the budget.
It's not in the budget, and it's, I'm the only one who's not spoken on the issue, so I will say that for a variety of reasons, accepting donations for things like this is not good policy, period, full stop. Because we could have someone that loves Hitler, that wants us to belong to a Hitler organization and would donate it. So I actually agree with everyone who's already spoken on that specific portion of the topic. No, please, no, no, no. We have to keep ordering here. I appreciate that. But so, on that matter, I do have some differences with some of the other opinions that have been voiced, but 100%, we should not be accepting outside donations for things that the county needs to pay for. It needs to be staff's decision on what they feel is best for their departments. And that is, we can certainly overrule them, but I am one that always respects people's individual professions, and I expect people to respect my experience and my profession, and what associations I choose to belong to, and I give that same respect to other professionals. So, Doc?
I want to speak about the ALA.
Well, to Commissioner Canard's point, it's really not an issue. So what we are trying to do with Open to the Public, we never, ever, ever want to muzzle the public. We sit here patiently through hours and hours and hours sometimes of listening to Open to the Public, and some of it quite rude every once in a while. And we do that patiently and endlessly every single meeting. We are just asking that when we say this, you need to be on topic. If this is about a specific item that is currently in the budget, then please get up here and speak.
I understand it's not in the budget any longer. The money has been withdrawn, so...
Yes.
I'll be back next meeting in case it gets added back in.
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you, Holly.
You bet.
Good to see you, Jeff.
Yep.
See you, Howard.
Would anybody like to speak not on ALA?
Or speak on what's in the budget?
What's on, thank you, Commissioner Canard, on what's in the budget.
My name is Mark Siveska. I live on North Wagon Point in Pine Ridge, and I'm here to represent the 11,000 residents of Pine Ridge. I have a letter on...
Please stop it for a moment. Everyone, if you're exiting the room, just know that when you speak, even in a whisper, it gets magnified up here, and we cannot respect and listen to someone else up here. So if you're going to talk, please leave the room quietly and do so outside. Thank you, and everybody have a good evening that's taken off.
For sure.
Yes.
I just want, I just want to make sure everyone, if they still want to stay and speak, I just don't want anyone to think that they sat here for this meeting and can't say what's on their mind. And I understand, excuse me, that it's not in the budget, but I think there was a lot of fear after a newspaper article came out, and I know you said you wouldn't vote for that, and I wouldn't either, but I don't know if these same people could make it on Tuesday if Commissioner Schlebo brings that up, which she has put in the paper that she would. So I realize it's a long night, and it's not in the budget. I just don't want anyone to go back and feel like their commissioners turned them away. And they, and a lot are turning back, so maybe they realize maybe Tuesday's the better day, or maybe it doesn't happen.
It is a more appropriate day than tonight, to be honest, because we have two Open to the Publix on Tuesday where you can talk about anything you want to, so.
I understand that. I just want, if someone has a burning desire to talk to their commissioners, I just want them to know that we're here.
We always are. Take it away, Mark.
Okay, thank you. I've already introduced myself. I'd like to start by saying thank you for what you do. We know it's not easy, particularly in contentious issues like library budget details and all that stuff, so thank you very much for that. After the last budget hearing, we met with Steve Howard, Aaron Doran, and Barbara Luckum to discuss the details of the budget, and we didn't agree on everything. But one thing was clear to us. We felt it important to publicly acknowledge and recognize and salute the accessibility, transparency, the candor, and the professionalism of those individuals. You have some really good people on your staff, and we really enjoy working with them. We'd also like to thank our county commissioners, all of them, that take the time to talk with us before and after these meetings, and in particular, those that take the time to meet with us to talk about important issues at Pine Ridge. We know you have a lot of demands on your time, and the time you spend with us goes a long way for us to have a better understanding of the issues. It underscores both the importance and payback from good communications. The things you do to improve your communications, the accessibility, the transparency, spending your time with us, and the efforts you take and investments you make in getting your message out all pay huge dividends. From our view, it is time and money well spent. We thank you again for that. Specific to the budget, a couple of comments and a couple of requests on where the budget and Pine Ridge interests intersect. You've heard it all before, but I am kind of compelled to repeat it. As a community, we have the worst roads in Citrus County. 65% of our roads require resurfacing, and our roads are currently, are previously on a pace to be resurfaced once every 263 years. I think we're making a lot of progress on that. On the 10th of March of this year, our board of directors sent you guys a letter asking for a couple of things, to increase the funding, to get us on a sustainable 25-year path for the resurfacing of roads. We're working on that. And then if we don't get to that now, to relieve us from some of the density rules that we've faced, as we look at the budget, we see that there is traditional funding, and then the two mils per year for five years, and we hold that till our roads get fixed. As you look at budget reductions that are going forward, there's going to be pressure to reduce that traditional funding streams and use that two mils per year for five years to completely replace that. We asked that as you work the budget details, you do not fall into the trap of using that money to replace traditional funding streams. In the two mils per year for five years, we also found out that a portion of it, 5% of it, is withheld in reserve for things, for discounts that are applied to our taxes. What we don't see in the 2024 budget is where that money, that $122,000 in rough numbers that is withheld this year, is being cash carried forward in the 2024 budget. So we would ask that we make sure that whatever is left, could be $5, could be $122,000, that that gets cash carried forward into the current budget, and that'll go a long way. We've also been beaten on the drum. We're not at that 25-year sustainable part yet, but we've been beaten on the drum for relief from the density rule. And we were very encouraged this morning when we went, met with Commissioner Davis, that there has been a change in policy to that. And we have adjusted that, and I think it's going to be a big impact for us on that. And I think the important message that we would like to leave with you is, not only did you listen to our requests, but you acted on it. And again, we'd like to thank you for that, because we don't always have that opportunity. On a final note, one of the things we noticed in the budget was, long-range planning is very important to us. Nobody likes to be surprised, and long-range planners are very important, not just in the land development area, but in other areas, workforce development, everything like that, so we can avoid surprises. And it'd be a good touch point for the community to reach out and go, hey, what's coming down the pike, so that we don't get time crunched, and then have to come to you with a lot of emotion, and sometimes vitriol, that we'd all like to avoid. Once again, we thank you for your time. We know it's a hard job, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. If you stick around to the end, I'm sure Aaron can give you an answer on the cash carry forward.
Thank you.
Right, Aaron?
Can she not just answer?
Yes, my name's Greg Hoying. I'm from Floral City. And unfortunately, I didn't get to review the budget for this year, but in the past I have, and in particular, I'd like to talk about the sheriff's budget. I went through these budgets with a fine tooth comb, and I found his numbers and his reasoning be very sound. However, in the past, he requested a pretty substantial amount of money to improve his marine fleet, which I'm sure was sorely needed. But I'm not seeing their presence out there. I'd like to know, because I live on the lake, I use the lake system, I frequent the Gulf, I see FWC out there, I am not seeing the sheriff. So I'd like to know what's going on with that. You know, is the money not being used anymore for that? Also, I just want to address, unfortunately, budget should not be political, but unfortunately it has been. And I understand that you have, you're going by the library board's recommendation, and I'd like a commitment from each of you, that you, all three of you, that you also go along with this. Can we get that?
We respond after everyone's done.
I understand. Okay, thank you. So anyways, just, I would like to just understand what's going on with the marine fleet for the sheriff, and if I could get a response, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to what little bit I had to say. I want to thank you all for what you do.
What's your name?
I'm sorry. Wade Smith. I live in La Canto.
Welcome.
I want to thank you all for what you all do, and the service that you all do for us, and all the citizens that serve underneath you. I was here for the ALA thing. You said it's been stricken out of the budget. I take you at your word. As far as somebody wanting to give the county money, if they want to give the county money, have them to go over to the treasurer and just write a check, and let it be unfettered money and unobligated, and we'll put it in the reserve. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
You're welcome.
How many more customers?
They're there. He's just slow.
Did you say that they're not going to do the funding for the ALA?
It is currently not in the budget, ma'am.
Oh, praise God.
Would you like to say your name for the record?
My name is Lisa Cruz. I live in Citrus County. All right, that's very good, and that's why I was here for. Thank you very much.
Did she get a green card for her? Nick, you got a green card? Yes, thank you.
My name is Antonia Oribona. Okay, so what's going on with the people that are supposed to do what is right? How could they allow in the schools to teach little ones, to teach anybody against nature, against...
Ma'am, I'm so sorry. We are only talking about the budget this evening. This is not an open forum, open to the public. It's only about budget item. If you have any issues with the budget...
Okay, so you guys didn't allow the ALA?
It is currently not in the budget.
Okay, so that's good. You did great. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Please fill out a green card. Next.
So I'm not allowed to say what it is?
It's not that, ma'am. We're always open. We get phone calls, we get emails all the time, but for Open to the Public, we just have very specific rules.
Hello, I'm Alessandra, and I live here in Inverness, and we are here to just to please cut the budget on the American Library Association.
Again, ma'am, it's not...
If you haven't already.
It's not in the budget currently, and we're trying to limit this to just what's in the budget right now.
Hey, how are you? My name's Roman Schwed. I moved my family here from Broward County last year, and you have super-friendly people here. Thank you. I was just here, I wanted to thank Ms. Finnegan, because you're kind of saying everything I'm thinking. I have a small manufacturing company, our costs have gone through the roof the last three years, and so we're just trying to, you know, squeeze by, make do. But please try not raising the mill rate. It would help out a lot. My other question is, who do we speak to about, you guys deal with Duke Energy at all? Can I email you some stuff I've got on them? I know it's not related to this meeting.
We're actually not supposed to, we answer when everybody's done, so just tell us what your issue is, and then we'll respond when everybody's done.
I've got some information. They're fleecing us something fierce. This is everybody in account, so.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. I'm David Adams. I live in Crystal Oaks. Kind of late on the budget. My wife and I are travel nurses, so we're out of town. But, you know, basically, I looked at my tax bill, and that's why I'm opposed, because I'm seeing basically a 25% increase proposal. And we've been here about two years. I just had a huge increase. So I'm opposed for, for that reason, that it's putting a huge burden on people that are new in the community, and it's not proportional to the people that have been here a while. So I'm just voicing my concern. That's pretty much it. I don't know the specifics of the budget, but I only see huge increase.
Thank you, sir.
Too much at one time. Yep, thank you.
Mark Conley, I'm a resident of Hernando. I was, I'll keep this short. I came primarily as a consequence of the article in The Chronicle, which implied that one of your fellow commissioners, her policy decisions were up for sale to the highest bidder. I was very glad to hear that the commissioners here today said that their policy decisions on things like the American Library Association are not up for sale. And I just wanted to make one point very clear. The article in The Chronicle suggested that the people opposing to the membership of the American Library Association were worried about the $275.
Sir, again, this is not in the budget. This is not in the budget, so we're really limiting public comment to just tonight.
Well, thank you very much.
But thank you.
Hi. I'm Gary Sinkowitz from Inverness. I've been here for maybe 40 years. I have a rental company called Terima. And what I'm here to request is to understand the effect that these property tax increases are having on renters. A lot of us own our own homes, and therefore we pay homestead. My homestead went up 7.8%, but I have a three-bedroom, two-bath condo that two single moms live in. They went up 32%. They're going to pay 400 a year more, 500 a year more, just to cover that tax increase. It's disproportionate to renters versus homesteaded homeowners. So my request is, please take that into consideration, and instead of increasing the millage rate, decrease it. The effect of these increases is devastating. That's it.
Thank you, sir. We will answer, I have a list of things here, so we'll answer when everyone's done. Are there any more customers behind the pillar that I can't see?
My name is Charlotte Todd. I live in Inverness.
Welcome.
Thank you. I don't know in the budget about paving roads. I live off of Apopka, and Apopka is atrocious. I see so many 18-wheelers going down there, ambulances, I'd hate to be in the back of it, because you're being bumped, just bumped all over the place. It's just atrocious. The road is just... The road is just ridiculous. And all they do is put Band-Aids on it, which make it worse. And I've lived down here for almost 10 years, and it's just getting worse and worse and worse. I see where they did side roads, but the big road, it's crazy. I go all over the place trying to, you know, avoid them. They're bad on tires, they're bad on everything with the car. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Frank? Be nice. Commissioner Finnegan's getting over a cold. Be especially nice to her.
My name is Frank Tapsin from Hernando, actually Arrowhead. And I have a few things I wanted to bring up. One of them being, listening to the sheriff. I wish he had come in here with a bottom line to his expenses, a bottom line to what he knew was going to be expenses added on to it, and a bottom line to the amount of money that he was looking for. Because I tried to follow everything he did, and I was left totally out of the picture. And maybe that's all right. Another point to make about that budget is, I'm on Social Security. Last year, I got an 8% raise in my Social Security, and I anticipate another 4% raise this year because of our president, which is, I thank him because it's money in my pocket. In the budget, I thought I saw something about a $2 million for mental illness compared to $20 million for a dog pound, which left me questioning what, you know, the priorities that people have. And the other thing that I, unfortunately, I cannot make it next week on Tuesday, where I get, have another opportunity to run my mouth. But one of the things that I wanted to bring up then is something that you don't want to hear. But my thing is nothing to do with the budget. My thing is about the fact that what these people are offering and what I don't want my children to hear or see. And you, I don't know if you can prevent the directors from bringing that material into the libraries or not, but I wish that was true. Has nothing to do with the budget, because, you know, because, anyways.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Come on up.
My name is Mary Ann Adams. I'm the wife of David Adams. We live over in Hunter's Ridge, Crystal Oaks. We're both, like you said, traveling nurses, but we've lived here for two years. It's our permanent home. And we're pretty upset about coming home to what I feel like is our forever home and finding that our tax bill is being increased 25% in one year. We understand that you all have a budget, but we feel like 40% of it is going towards public schools. We don't have children that are school age. The other 60% is going for repairing roads. We're wondering what you all are doing with the current budget that you have, if you all can just reutilize that budget and make way instead of burdening new residents that have been here less than three years and charging us 25% more on our taxes. We feel like, you know, we're hardworking people. We don't get any kind of government check, because we work too hard, we make too much money. During COVID, we worked seven days a week, 12-hour days. And, you know, we're hard workers. But I don't want to give every penny I earn to people that sit home and carry a check. And then they have all these babies, and they think, well, we can get more government money because we are pushing out babies. And, you know, that's kind of what this society becomes, become a society, not of people that, like us, that are hardworking, but people that sit home and figure out ways that they can be supported by other working class. So I'm just asking you all to look at your budget again. Give people like David and I a break, so we don't get our little bit of money that we make. We don't get, you know, taken from us, and every year, it's going to go up and up. We had homesteaded, but we homesteaded late, because we ended up hiring some drug head from the area to fix our house. So we were, you know, waiting for him to get through with all his wreckage before we could even move in our home. And, you know, that was unfortunate for us, but that's what our situation was. I actually was starting to work at the hospital locally here. And because our home was just in disarray, I couldn't live in all the dust and everything. So I ended up going back and travel nursing. But this whole budget thing about, you know, why our taxes are going up 25%, you know, that's just, it's just too much at one time, like David said. So please look at it and see if you all can make some kind of adjustment.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Would you like to respond, Commissioner Kennard or Commissioner Finnegan? Who wants to go first?
Whichever.
I'll jump in. The proposed millage rate at this point is just that, a proposed rate. There will be additional cuts between now and the 26th. I feel very confident in that. What is, what has not been discussed tonight, and it's not necessarily the appropriate time to do so, Commissioner Baze has been championing it. And I think she has the full support so far by the board of looking at alternative ways to fund the elephant in the room, which is the road resurfacing, so that ultimately, it is funded in a way that is fair to all property owners in the county and is not just a burden, a continuing burden on homesteaded properties or is a continual addition to the millage rate to try and get to that 25-year cycle. Also, the same applies. We're looking at some alternative funding methods for funding road patrol for the sheriff's office. That, too, will help spread some of the burden more fairly across the county to everyone. So we're not there yet. We're not going to get there for this year's budget. But I do think that you will see, I'm very confident that you will see a reduction in the final millage rate from what's being proposed at this point. Commissioner Finnegan brought up some great points about the reserves. That's something that I think we need to look very hard at. What can be reduced there and still maintain the fantastic bond rating that has directly resulted in savings of millions of dollars while Randy was here in refinancing some of our bonds or reissuing some of those bonds. With the improved bond rating that we had, we have saved the taxpayers millions and millions of dollars. As far as resurfacing of Apopka, Apopka is a collector road and will be resurfaced when it comes up on the priority list using SCOP funds. I know that for the folks along Apopka, it's a priority right now. I get it. But there's only so much SCOP money. I believe we're the only county in our district that qualifies any more, any longer for SCOP money. We get all that we can, and the SCOP funds pay 75, 80% of the road resurfacing costs. So the county only has to chip in that remaining amount. So those collector roads, we don't use our road resurfacing. They don't come into the equation, our normal equation for road resurfacing, but they have their own priority list. And we do as much of those as we can each year until we run out of that SCOP money. And then you start where you left off the following year. So I know that Apopka's on that list. I just don't know off the top of my head where it's at. It will happen. I can't tell you, I can't tell you exactly when, though. All right? That's all I've got.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Probably should have my glasses on, so I don't miss anybody. Actually, first of all, Mark, I want to get your answer. The 122,000 cash carry forward. Erin, can you speak on that before we go any further?
Sure. So the cash carry forward for that will come once our comprehensive annual financials are completed by the clerk of court. Generally, in April, we bring forward the true-up, true-down. And that's when we know the amount that's going to be moved and carried forward. It's really just the true of the fund, what's left over, which is what Mark was referring. What's left over this year, we will acknowledge and put back into the fund.
And that would be specifically for road resurfacing?
That's correct.
Good, Mark? Good? Okay. Wonderful. Mr. and Mrs. Adams, thank you so much for... Where'd you guys go? Thank you all for being hard workers and doing the job that so many people did not want to do when our country was in crisis. I understand about the tax increase. You work hard. I want to say a couple of things for that. A few years back, my husband and I, we've always lived in Citrus County, but moved from Citrus Hills to Homasasa. And we, in the first year or so, we so enjoyed the homestead exemption that the previous owners of the property had. And I did not even want to open up my tax bill when I knew the property had turned over. So I don't know if part of that has happened to you all. You said you were late in homestead. Your taxes were probably lower than they would have been because you enjoyed your previous owner's homestead. And then when the year caught up, it hit you. So I don't, I'm not sure if it was all our increases. And Mrs. Adams, I agree. When you work hard, you don't want all your money going to maybe others that don't have that same work ethic. And I say that from a heart that gave herself to social service for a long time, because I understand there's truly people in need. And I think we all would agree, we want to help those people. But then there's other people that maybe take advantage of that situation. But that's not our taxes. That would be your federal tax dollars, where you think that maybe that waste would be. We are trying to be efficient in county government. We did get painfully behind in some things. Like our friends from Pine Ridge tell us a lot about the roads and our friends, you know, suffering on Apopka Avenue, many, many people. And that's not this commission. And I'm actually very new. But somehow, we have to fix some of these problems left over from the past. But I agree. I've made it very clear. I don't like the proposed millage rate. I will not vote on that rate. So somehow, we're going to have to try to get everybody's roads paved and make sure that we're running our county government officially, make sure Mr. Howard has the money he needs in case a Cat 3 hurricane gave us the direct hit. He's got to operate. And we have to balance to protect your hard-earned money, too. It is such a balancing act. And I don't know how it's all going to shake out on the 26th, but I can promise you this. I promise you, I will do my best, and I know staff. I really do trust that they're going to try to whittle this down. So I'm looking forward to many conversations between now and then. Let's see. Frank? I looked over the budget, and I will let Erin verify what I'm saying, but there is not $20 million in our budget for the animal shelter. No, that's not in our budget at all. It's my understanding there's not just the money that's been donated for that is in there, but there's no county money, correct, Erin, in addition to that at this time? Especially not $20 million.
No, there is no $20 million in the budget. And there's no, the board hasn't even come to a consensus on what the debt issue amount will be for the animal shelter.
Is that clear, Frank? Okay. Greg, your questions for the sheriff? Greg, I'm looking for Greg Hoing. Did he leave? Greg Hoing, if you're listening, you need to talk to the sheriff about some of those questions. And he wanted us to give some sort of stance on if Commissioner Schlebaugh brings up the donation. And I will say publicly that I will not vote for that. I have a lot more to say, actually, to both sides of this. I've gotten a lot of email from very nice people on both sides of the issue. And as God is my witness, if I'm the last person standing, I still believe in one nation under God. I truly do. And maybe I'll have to say a lot more about this on Tuesday, which is not the appropriate time now. But, you know, our country, we need to find on things that we disagree with to still have mutual respect for one another. Mr., am I saying it right? Schwed, Roman Schwed? Yeah. I just wanted to say thank you for choosing Citrus County and doing manufacturing. My husband's a bit of an entrepreneur, and it is so hard to get anything made in the USA. And I really want that to change in our country. Thank you for being that small business owner that says, not only am I going to manufacture in the USA, I'm going to do it in Citrus County. So you have my praise and kudos. And I think that wraps it up. If I have forgotten anything, I'm going to blame it on my head cold. So thank you all for being respectful and attentive and caring so much about this great community.
All right, I agree with what has been said so far. I'll try to just mop up the pieces that I don't think were covered. Duke is a private company, and we have nothing to do with Duke. So take it up with them. The sheriffs, yes, you need to talk to the sheriff about sheriffs on the water. Frank, I agree with you about it not being, I mean, you saw how many basic questions I had to ask, and I'm supposed to be better briefed up on this stuff, right? It came in kind of at the last minute, and so I agree with your assessment. But let's cut the man some slack, because he's been a little busy dealing with hurricane stuff. And I could see his, you couldn't see his face, but he looks like he's been working his, yeah, he looks like he's been working his tail off. So make no mistake, we will be looking at every single budget item very closely between now and the 26th. And it ain't over till that final vote then. Just a global comment about our tax structure. We're $188 million backlog in residential road resurfacing alone. And that was from prior boards not keeping up with maintenance. So my personal feeling about fiscal responsibility and fiscal prudence and fiscal conservatism is if you have an asset and you need to keep it, you maintain it. If you don't need it, you sell it. So we should have been keeping up with the roads all along. The only time it's okay to do that is when your income tanks, like when Duke's tax bill to us last decade tanked, we had to cut, and we had to cut a lot. And the only other time is when inflation doubles, which is, you know, now. All the intervening years in between our revenue tanking and inflation doubling, we should have been paving roads, and we haven't. So it's $188 million backlog. The other comment is that our tax structure, as Commissioner Kennard said, and he gave credit to Commissioner Baze, but I think we've all been talking about this quite a bit. And this is why we hired Neighbors in Giblin to give us revenue possibilities, revenue options, because we are way too heavy on ad valorem, way heavy. I mean, our ad valorem should be way, way, way lower than it is now. But we, it's not going to magically, you know, we have to get the money somewhere. And so there are alternative funding sources that still make it very fair, makes it more fair to the residents. And it's not, as Commissioner Kennard said, it's not going to happen this year. So the budget is, I mean, the revenue, or excuse me, the ad valorem is going to have to go up this year. But look for us to try to cut it and cut it and cut it in years to come with alternative revenue sources. So please, please listen to us, because we're doing a lot of deep dive into this. Again, we are taxpayers, too, and we don't like it any more than you do. I got my trim notice, too. And that is everything. I think I covered everything. Did you guys have any last-minute thoughts?
I did forget something. I'm sorry, Mr. Schwed. Excuse me. The Duke Energy, could you email? I know she, do you, you know how to get our email addresses online? Yeah, if not, Doug, wave your hand, we'll help you with that. But yes, I want to hear what you have to say about that. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, to echo Commissioner Finnegan, we're always... Yeah, I mean, to echo Commissioner Finnegan, we're always willing to listen. There's just a lot of things we can't necessarily help with, but please email us. Anything further, Commissioner Kennard? All right, Erin, where are we?
Okay, next is B5, which is accept any motions to adjust the tentative millage and proposed budget, which we had none. So the recommended action is to accept the proposed millage rates and percent increase, decrease in millage over the rollback rate. So I'm going to read that off. It is also up on the slide.
I wouldn't say we had none. I wanted to reduce, I wanted to shave something off tonight. I just don't think I had consensus to make the motion.
Right. So on the 26th, when we bring that back, at that point, we will adjust anything the board has consensus to remove. So the millage motion, the following, the motion, the millage and rollback rates must be publicly read into the minutes. So for countywide, the general fund is 6.9951. Transportation is 0.9860. Health department is .0564 for a countywide total of 8.0375 mils. Next is special districts. Library services is .3147. Fire rescue taxing is set at zero. Fire rescue MSTU is .5780. And the stormwater MSTU is also set now at zero. So special taxing districts total .8927 mils for the total millage of 8.9302. The aggregate rollback rate is 7.5349 mils and the proposed aggregate millage rate is 8.8755 mils. Therefore, the percentage millage increase is 17.79. The next one is B6.
Yeah. It says we need a, we need a motion on B5.
I would make that motion.
Motion to approve as read? Yeah?
Yep.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Kennard. Second, I'll second it. Any further board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
There's one more hearing, guys. There's one more hearing. I hope you, we're not going to have a discussion from the audience, but there's one more hearing. Motion passes 2-1.
B6.
Please be respectful.
Is to set the tentative millage rates for fiscal year 23, 24. The recommended action is to request the board adopt and authorize the chairman to execute a resolution adopting the Board of County Commissioners tentative millage rates for the countywide millage, library services, fire taxing district, fire rescue EMS, or MSTU, and stormwater MSTU for 22 or 2023, 2024. And that's also a.
Looking for a motion on B6?
So moved.
Second. Any further board discussion?
This motion is just for the special districts library through, or the special district total of .8927.
It's for.
All of them. But yes, it's 8.9302. Well, that one was to approve, accept the millages, and this is to allow the chairman to execute a resolution for that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 2-1.
B7, set the tentative budget for the countywide budget, library services, fire taxing district, fire rescue EMS, MSTU, and stormwater MSTU. Recommended action, request the board adopt and authorize the chairman to execute the resolution adopting the 23, 24 tentative budget for the countywide budget, library services, fire taxing district, fire rescue EMS, MSTU, and stormwater MSTU.
Hey, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second, we have a motion in a second. Any further board discussion?
I am so sorry. It sounds like that is the same motion that we just made.
It's all procedural.
I understand, but the, so the first one was we voted on 8.9. The second one was the chairman was saying resolution. What's the third one?
This one's for the budget. So that was for the millage. This is for the budget.
Millage versus budget.
All right. Forgive my stuffy head.
That's all right.
I don't have it in front of me again because my computer doesn't work.
You're doing very well for your first budget season. It's a lot to absorb. Any further board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 2-1. All right, B8. We have our next, our our final budget hearing will be September 26th, 2023, 5:01 PM, right here at the county commission meeting room, 110 North Apopka. Upcoming meetings, we have our regular meeting this coming Tuesday at 1:00 PM, again, right here in this room. And if there is nothing further from the board, we are adjourned.